Welcome. Good afternoon. This is the time and place for the regular meeting of the Planning Commission for Wednesday, June 20, 2012. May I have roll call, please?
Planning Commissioners Astorian.
Here.
Sheik.
Here.
Lee, Yesayan, and Chairperson Landrigan.
We have our report on the posting of the agenda.
Agenda for this meeting was posted on Wednesday, June 13, 2012, on the bulletin board outside City Hall and on the city's website.
Thank you. We'll have the Pledge of Allegiance.
I will do this. To the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic of the United States, one nation under God, in the resolve of the Justice for all.
We have June 6, 2012, meeting minutes. Are there comments?
I move, oh, go ahead. I'm sorry, Commissioners. There should be a correction on page five. The sentence prior to number 10, amendments, as Commissioner Astorian commented about making a handicap parking spaces both handicap and nonhandicap, I think it was handicap and guest.
Ah, you're correct. Any other changes?
I move that we accept a minute as amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, we will move to oral communications, and we do have Mr. Richard Spiritu. Let me make my little announcement about oral. If I can find it. Discussion is limited to items not a part of the agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. The Commission may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Madam Chair, also staff. I really didn't come here for that, but this also falls into that category. I have been an advocate for ADA. I think all of you know that. But I've developed a couple more quivers for my arrows. One of those is the Fair Housing Act. And the Fair Housing Act prevents against discrimination in a whole bunch of areas. And it falls under the jurisdiction of some organization called Housing and Urban Development to enforce the Fair Housing Act. That includes homes, apartment buildings, condominium developments, et cetera, et cetera. Due to the fact that the city of Glendale receives HUD money and other grants, the Fair Housing Act starts to apply to a lot of different areas. One of the things that I will be giving all of the Commissioners tonight is from the LA County. And this is Title 24. These are regulations on multiple family dwellings. It's one of 13 pages. It's only the first page. And it gives a whole bunch of checkoff, you know, bathrooms, accessibility, doorways, ramps, all that kind of good stuff. Unfortunately, that document is outdated. I want to repeat, it's outdated. And the reason why it's outdated is that because on March 15, the Ides of March in the year 2012, Department of Justice issued new guidelines, new definitions. And I'm providing the members of the Commission with that first page. I'm not going to give you all 168 pages. But one of the interesting things in that new guideline is they're talking about handicap parking, okay? And they require handicap parking. They also require accessible parking for van accessibility. But they changed the law just a little bit, just like they changed the law with reach for children and grab bars, because somebody in the Department of Justice finally realized, oh gee, we got children in wheelchairs. Ever go over to Hoover High School, you see quite a few young people running around in wheelchairs. But when it came to handicap parking and the development of condos or various other facilities that will be coming in front of this Commission, it states that you have to provide the appropriate handicap parking in accordance with the numbers of parking spaces that are required according to your municipal codes. So if you have a project that requires 110 parking spaces, you can't reduce it down to 84, because you're still going to have to have the same number of requirements, and that's one parking space per 25, and you wind up having those parking spaces. And so I would like to leave a copy of these things for each member of the Commission. And I'll get one more, because I hope you do have everybody there. And I want to thank you very much, and I hope to see you in the near future.
Mr. Spiritu, I'd like to ask you a question.
Yes.
So you're saying that even if a parking reduction is applied for and given, the original parking requirement is the one in which the handicap parking space is applied towards?
According to the new rules and regulations by the Department of Justice regarding ADA. And that is as of the Ides of March 2012. What happened before, you know, you could make a parking reduction, and then all of a sudden, you know, you had to reduce the number of handicap parking spaces. But now we have a new ballgame, and the Department of Justice has come up with that. And if you don't mind, I'll come back in just a second.
Well, while you're gathering that, I think we appreciate you bringing that to our attention, and I think it's something that we'll certainly make sure city staff takes a look at, because it does have implications on projects that we'll look at.
This is the new guidelines by the Department of Justice, okay? These are the new guidelines, okay? All several hundred. And there's also reference to the 2010 guidelines, which is about three times this size.
So I'm sure that, thank you very much. That concludes my cards for oral presentation. So we now will have our zoning appeals, of which we have no, new or old zoning appeals. And our Planning Commission items, we have no old business, but we do have some new business, and that is our item number 7A, Glendale Municipal Code amendments and downtown specific planned amendments. And so I would like to open the public hearing and have a staff report.
Thank you, Chair Landrigan. I'm Alan Loomis, Principal Urban Designer for the City Planning Division, and with Kristin Asp, the Senior Planner, author of this report. We have a small slide presentation, because the majority of the amendments that you're considering are map amendments or affect boundaries on the map, and I think it's useful to see the before and after side by side or one after the other in order to understand what we're proposing this evening. Basically, the amendments we're looking at are some minor renaming or reclassifying of some of the districts. And then, when you do that, there's associated references throughout the document that have to be amended. There is some expansion of the provisions that were originally developed for the Art and Entertainment District to other districts of the downtown, and then associated zoning code amendments that support those amendments to downtown specific plan. So by and large, we take them relatively minor, but we will walk you through all of those presentations once we get the slides up. As the projector warms up. I think it'll be warm after this happens.
We call this a fade-in.
Ready to go.
I had an old TV that used to do that.
Okay, so I've already done my introduction. As I said, the discussion is going to be focused on the maps of downtown specific plan. I think it's useful to just get a little context of the map, so I provided this here. You can see, okay, you can see the cursor following with the arrow here. This is the 134 freeway, the high-rise district with two hotels. It's at the north end of downtown. This being Brand Boulevard brings you down to the Americana and the Galleria. Colorado more or less forms the south boundary of the downtown specific plan. Here's Broadway, and it reaches out along Broadway out to Glendale Avenue to the City Hall campus right here. So this dark boundary represents the boundary of downtown specific plan. And just to give you a reference, this clicks through and shows you the land use districts or the land use map for the downtown specific plan without all those references there. So just to cut back, so you can orient yourself, this is the Alex Theater right here in kind of the middle of it all. Much of the amendments are related to the Alex Theater. We are proposing to reclassify the underlying zoning of the Alex Theater property to civic facilities. We already have a civic center district that applies to the City Hall campus, courthouse across the street, the new police building, and the Central Park where the library and adult recreation center is. That's this kind of very light sage green here on the map and here. So the map amendments to the districts looks like this. You probably haven't even noticed that it happened, because it's so subtle. We're actually talking about two properties highlighted here. So this is the Alex Theater right there. The other one that's in your packet, and the proposal is you've reviewed it, is also to extend the civic facilities zoning designation to the passageway that's proposed adjacent to the museum, proposed Museum of Neon Art. That's sort of opposite the Americana. As it happens, since we developed this, the City Council is going to consider an ordinance that would actually reclassify that as a public right-of-way, in which case we don't zone public right-of-ways, so there's no reason to rezone this property. So we propose just to take that out of the proposal, leave the zoning as it is, which is the Maryland district for that particular parcel. So that would be the proposed zone changes to the district map. As I said, if we rezone, when we reclassify the civic center district as civic facilities to include the Alex Theater, there's a number of just text changes we have to make through the map. The other one that this triggers is that the areas, the districts surrounding the Alex Theater, it's called the Alex Theater District. Now that the Alex Theater is not part of that district, we propose to just rename it Mid-Brand. Otherwise, we're not making any changes. But Mid-Brand is how everybody thinks of the two-block section of Brand surrounding the Alex Theater. That's how we commonly refer to it, so we'll use the common name to describe the district. The other provision or other change that we'd be making is actually not in the downtown specific plan, but in the zoning code under section 340, actually, it's 04 there on the slide, but it's 340, and subsection 15. These were provisions that were established for the Art and Entertainment District, which is highlighted in the dashed red. That is, right now, the same as the Maryland district of the downtown specific plan. It's generally that area that's sort of is, the sort of short block of Maryland where the exchange, the marketplace is, with a few fingers extending out around Central Park and some other locations. When the Art and Entertainment District was adopted, there were specific provisions given to this area for operators that would be serving alcohol, like nightclubs, restaurants, taverns, et cetera. They were given, rather than having to go through a CUP process, they were allowed to meet specific standards and a background licensing process that would allow them to move in. When we did this, we found that, in fact, the real issue in a lot of times was the operator and not necessarily the location. This allows us to, provision allowed us to control the operator more directly and eliminate a CUP process for an area where we wanted to see those kinds of businesses move into the downtown. That so far is proving successful. We've got a couple of businesses that have utilized that process. And we think at this point it makes sense to expand those provisions to the Mid-Brand District and Broadway Centers, so you can see on the map the areas where those provisions would expand as well. The final set of amendments relates to the frontage standards on the land use map. We have, each one of the districts, sub-districts of downtown specific plan has a set of land use restrictions. Where we have frontage requirements, which is the thick lines right up against the street, we have additional land use restrictions and often design restrictions as well. So basically, the primary frontage is the most restrictive. That's for the most part focused on Brand Boulevard, where we want to see a retail restaurant environment, so we restrict personal services, professional offices, and those kinds of functions. But we do allow restaurants and retail of all kinds. As you move away to the entertainment frontage, then we allow the retail, but we also allow nightclubs, which we don't generally allow on Brand Boulevard. Secondary frontages and other frontages are far more permissive. Those are mostly focused on design. As I said, we introduced the entertainment frontage when we adopted the Art and Entertainment District. So we are proposing some very subtle changes to those boundary lines of those frontage standards. By and large, they're basically adjusting them, so the change from, say, entertainment frontage, their primary frontage occurs at an alley line or a logical place where building ownership would change. And so this is the proposed map, and these are the six locations where there's been some adjustment to these frontage standards. For the most part, we're probably, I'd say, in all locations where we're changing it, we're making it more permissive rather than more restrictive in terms of the change. So we're contracting the primary frontage in a few locations. That allows us to really focus, it's really about supporting retail on Brand Boulevard, and there's some adjustment.
Say that again.
We're generally changing from primary frontage to secondary frontage or entertainment frontage. Primary frontage is the most restrictive standard that we have. But we found that we were kind of potentially overreaching a bit with primary frontage, that we really want to focus, it's really about Brand Boulevard. And then there are a few locations where the change is from primary frontage to entertainment frontage or another frontage standard is you round the corner, and that's all the same tenant space. So then you have a tenant space that's got different standards on two street fronts, which doesn't make sense, so it'd all be the same.
So the most restrictive applies to all sides?
Only to bribery.
In most cases, we're going more, less restrictive.
So if on Brand you have Panarina, for example, on a corner, the frontage that's on Brand is primary and the side that's on, what is that, Wilson? I don't know.
Yeah.
Is considered secondary.
In most cases, yeah.
But it's one business.
Yeah, for example.
So it's not address-oriented, it's?
It's street face-oriented. That makes sense. A good example is at the corner of Broadway and Maryland, with the former Circuit City property that's under construction. Under the existing map, the Maryland frontage is entertainment, the Broadway frontage is secondary, but as that building's been developed and designed, that's all one tenant space. So it doesn't make sense to have two conflicting land use or frontage standards on there. So we're proposing to make both frontages entertainment frontage, which is appropriate, otherwise they'll have conflicting standards for one tenant space. So we're just rounding a corner in some logical places.
But I guess my concern is what you said, and just if you could maybe clarify it for me, the secondary, the less restrictive one will rule if it is on a building, so Panarina would be secondary, not primary? Or would it be primary?
If it's designated primary on the map, then it's primary.
And it is.
Yes.
All right, well, that's not what I heard you say, so.
If I may jump in, we're not proposing a general rule that suddenly less restrictive applies whenever there's a conflict. We're just trying to remove the conflicts.
That's fine. I just want to know what the process is that we're using to remove it. What is the cleansing solution we're using? What is it eradicating?
Right.
Are we using bleach, or are we just using, you know, a clean green thing?
Woolite.
Woolite. But I'd like, I'd like to know where that is. You can maybe show me that.
It's actually, it's actually the map amendments we're proposing, we think, will eliminate those potential conflicts.
Can you tell me where it is in the text?
And also in your exhibits, which one is the proposed and which one is the existing?
I don't believe you have the existing in your exhibits.
Exhibit B is the proposed, would you say?
Correct.
Is it?
Yes.
Exhibit B that we have in our package? That's the proposed, right? Or the change, with the changes? Okay.
It should be a map amendment. See?
Okay, so, well, Exhibit C deals with height and FAR limits. Exhibit B deals with land use districts.
And floor uses.
Figure 3A.
Right.
Right. So I mean, going back to what Commissioner Landrigan was just mentioning, Alan, if you look at California and Brand.
Yes.
The color is, it shows primary frontage street.
Right.
Okay, not secondary.
Until you go down the block.
And it's the same color down the block as well, it's still primary.
No, no, when you go down to past, between Lexington and California, we have a two-tone street.
Yeah. The secondary frontage street is part of Brand is secondary. This, by the way, this is that building that houses the school.
Twenty-four hour.
Twenty-four hour and all that, right?
Right. If I may, on that particular block, that's one where we are proposing a change, and this is actually to avoid a potential conflict between the frontage standards and the proposal we just made regarding the expansion of the art and entertainment provisions related to alcohol service. The provisions for the expanded art and entertainment district provisions do not extend to the Gateway Center District, which is basically the high-rise district rendered in a dark brown on the map. But as presently, as adopted right now, the primary frontage standards do extend to, what's the 300 North Brand building, the first office building on North Brand, that sort of terraces up after the one-story retail above Carousel. Primary frontage would allow you to have the alcohol service with these additional provisions, but the underlying land use district at Gateway Center doesn't have that. So we're proposing to change from primary frontage to secondary frontage for that office building, thus eliminating this conflict where only at the ground floor can you do the special thing, but elsewhere in the building and off the alley you couldn't.
I'm sorry to have interrupted you. You can continue, and then we'll ask you questions afterwards, but.
But this is my last, this is the last slide. So this is a good time to ask questions. After this, set of amendments to downtown specific plan, which is mostly map amendments and some just text changes, the change civic center to civic facilities, Alex Theater District to Mid-Brand District. The remaining amendments that we're proposing are relatively minor amendments, some to the zoning code that are basically facilitate this change. And so with that, that's basically the overview. I'm more than happy to go through each one of these kind of minor adjustments to the frontage map, if you like, but.
And that's the, your completion of your staff report?
Yes.
All right. Any questions for staff from our Commissioners?
Questions right now.
I have a couple. So changing Alex to civic facilities, what's the purpose of that? And the Neon Museum to civic, I mean, right now, because it is in the, it's the Alex Theater District. And I thought one of the important parts of that was, so if there are any structures that are going to go around Alex Theater, it would not overwhelm the structure and the historical significance of it. And that, I'm positive that is being addressed in this, correct? But then what is the reason of changing Alex Theater District to Alex Theater Civic District? What does it achieve?
Well, what we're doing is reclassifying the underlying zoning of the Alex Theater property to civic facilities, renounced classed as Alex Theater District. We're moving it to the Civic Facilities District and expanding the definition of that to basically encompass various public service or public facilities that are intended for public purposes. It's very similar to the SR zone that we have elsewhere in the city, that is a kind of special civic use zone. And so the definition or the description of the civic center now Civic Facilities District is somewhat changed to reflect that. It's essentially the basic change, because the passageway that's proposed adjacent to Mona also falls into that category. That's why we proposed to include that, because if the council vacates that and turns it into a public right-of-way, we wouldn't be funding that anyways.
Then, Mr. Loomis, if we are going to take this building, which is going to be classified on there again civic facilities, if I'm not wrong, right? So we're not talking about the district, we're talking about few buildings that are getting the designation of civic facilities.
Correct.
Zoning.
Correct.
We're not talking about anything around the city of Glendale building or on Broadway that all of a sudden the zoning is changed for?
That's correct. It's very parcel-oriented to properties that are under public ownership.
Much like spot zoning, isn't it?
It's a specific plan.
And then the other question that I, if I may, Mrs. Landrigan, the other question that I had is, I was reading through the staff report, and I came across this prohibition of supermarkets in certain primary, for example, in the primary frontage streets, a supermarket is conditional, is conditional, correct?
It's in your matrix.
Yeah, I'm looking at Kristin.
That'll be page 44. No, well, actually, table 3B3.
Yes.
Okay. So in other words, a supermarket can hypothetically, if conditionally approved, open on Brand Boulevard and the primary, under the primary frontage.
Correct.
Correct? Yet, we are going to prohibit the same supermarket to open on a secondary frontage streets. What's the logic behind that?
It's actually an entertainment street frontage is the change.
Okay. Here is what the issue that I have with this one little thing with the supermarket. The chances of a supermarket, and I don't, and watch, I'll eat my words in future, that the chances that a supermarket can pay the high rents on Brand Boulevard is very, 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 very slim. On Maryland Avenue or on Central Avenue, the second, if you're thinking about a 24/7 downtown, live, work, play, these folks have to be able to get to the supermarket. We have about 1,000 units that is either there or being constructed or in the process, that within a quarter mile be able to carry the buggies, and that's a British word for you, and get the stuff in and take it to their condominiums or apartments that they live in and so forth. Why are we restricting this on the secondary or the entertainment end of it? I mean, seriously, I mean, and by the way, I'm not, I'm being very consistent about my views about Maryland, and I've spoken about this thing publicly, that if you want to change the zoning, add to it, do not restrict it on Maryland. And I think that's the way to go. And I believe that a supermarket on Maryland or further down south or a little bit further up, on the secondary ends or on the perimeter streets that straddle. up, on the secondary ends or on the, on the perimeter streets that straddle Brand going up and down, is the place for it to be.
Right. Your point's well taken. The restriction from conditional use to not permitted on a frontage standard for supermarkets is only applied to the entertainment frontage, which is basically Maryland Avenue between Wilson and Harvard and just sort of wrapping the corners to turn to the alleys. That's the only place it would be restricted. The secondary streets, central, anywhere else in the downtown, it would be a permitted use.
So let me ask you this. Circuit City property, Broadway Lofts, they have fifteen or sixteen thousand square feet corner that they are trying to really get entertainment, restaurant use and so forth. What if you had a Bristol Farms or a Trader Joe's that showed, showed interest in that space? To me, that would be a heck of an addition to that neighborhood.
Yeah. Your point is also well taken. If I'm not mistaken, Kristin, supermarkets are actually defined as over that particular square footage, so we didn't think we would have.
Which is twenty thousand square feet.
I see.
So we're talking about, yeah, twenty thousand square feet or more, that particular space and most of the spaces we'd be looking at in the downtown on those kind of primary or entertainment frontage streets are well under that square footage. Bristol Farms, those kinds of super, what we call supermarkets are not, are smaller than that square footage, so they wouldn't be supermarkets. I believe they're generally classed as general retail.
Correct.
So in other words.
Which is permitted.
So in other words, a supermarket that is twenty thousand and below can be located at that corner.
Exactly.
Correct?
Because our zoning code considers it general retail.
Okay. That's a good distinction.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good catch.
All right. Mr. Sheets?
No questions, but I have, no specific questions, but I have comments.
I, I do have a question. I guess, what was the impetus to bring about this change? What were the reasons that the planning department brought changes? What were the incidents that are the reoccurring elements that bring about a change to this plan to bring to us? I mean, when this was adopted, how many years ago? Three, four?
Downtown specific plan was adopted at the end of 2006. And I would say we've made minor amendments almost every year since then. The most recent and most significant was the art and entertainment district, which was a little more than a year ago, probably initiated about two years ago, adopted about eighteen months ago. Part of this is having used the art and entertainment district provisions now for a year, we think there was some tinkering and adjustments that need to be made, and we felt that it was also working out pretty well and it was appropriate to expand the incentive to encourage restaurants and taverns that we gave to Maryland. We thought it was appropriate to expand that incentive to Mid-Brand as well. So that's, and while we were at it, we thought the Alex Theater should appropriately be classified as a civic facility rather than just a generic land use.
All right. Mr. Sheets?
If you're finished, I just had one. I did, brought about a question on that topic. So I do recollect other changes occurring with the plan. Was there any type of public outreach to get input relative to the, the changes and the upgrades and what the community's thoughts were about?
Not on this specific set of amendments, other than initiating the amendments with council. On the art and entertainment district, we had some pretty extensive outreach with operators and the property owners in that area.
Okay. So, so then at that, in the art and entertainment district, that outreach was with, with the participants or the people in, in the area that would be impacted by it?
Yeah, we did outreach with pretty much all the property owners, a number of the business owners in that area, a number of, you know, entertainment operators that we would like to attract to the district. We asked them what sort of incentives would bring you here? And that's actually where the provisions related to alcohol service came about. That's, was a major time impediment that they said would prevent them from coming to the city. Or the time delay and uncertainty of that. And they said, so that was one of the reasons we introduced that.
I do have a few more questions. You know, as I look at this map, we're looking at it in plan view, the Alex Theater has nothing to do with Civic Facilities. It's a brand-facing building. If you look at it as a streetscape, it seems really, I think, too plenary to disconnect it from the street frontage. I find, I, I have a real hard time with it, and I, I understand that these little intrusions and this gathering together and these kind of, you know, bland new names for the districts. Mid-Brand could be anywhere, it could be in Kansas. And I, you know, I'm sorry, I think that, you know, part of the energy of the whole downtown specific plan is, is slowly being eroded away with maybe small little changes and modifications. To me, that's somewhat troubling. When I see the Alex being added to, to a place that's not even connected to the Civic Facilities, it's like a boneyard, so what? There are a lot of Civic Facilities, streets are Civic Facilities. I, I think it's not a logical choice, having, you know, the Parkway there. I, I didn't even hear a reason why it served, you know, a land use purpose. You know, the land use is a Civic land use, whether you, I mean, I don't know what this, the Civic land use changes it from the brand, except for that it's a change. Does it empower the city to do more there than they would now? I mean, what, what are the impediments at the moment? I see none, and I didn't hear any proposed for the change. So when I asked you what the impetus to do this was and to make such changes that would almost diminish the importance of the City Hall, the Civic Center, the Alex by, you know, calling them Civic Facilities, seems insulting to me as a citizen. So, you know, I would like some sort of thought on that, because I, I think of, of the Alex being fronting Brand, I don't think of it having any connection outside of the fact that it's owned by the city to the Civic Center.
But Mr. Foyce, can I elaborate?
Sure. It's, the, regarding your point about the energy of the.
DSP.
The DSP being kind of slowly leaking away, to paraphrase, the same standards will apply, development standards, to the Alex Theater. I mean, that part isn't changing. It's not, it's certainly, what happens with the Alex Theater is largely, on the exterior is largely determined by the fact that it's such an important historic building, and all of the secret protections will certainly continue to apply, no matter what zoning we do, would do not apply to the project. I think that including the Alex Theater in this, in, with other civic buildings, in our minds, it wasn't, it wasn't meant to at all downgrade the status of it, it was to recognize it as, you know, a really important icon and something that is really treasured by the citizens as a whole, and it kind of gives a, you know, it has, it was one of those few buildings that has an importance to the population, that is a little, you know, I won't say larger than life, but is, you know, more so than any other theater that might open.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
From, from a legal perspective and thinking about the effect of zoning on a long-term basis, when Civic Facilities are zoned for Civic uses, those uses are preserved for those particular locations. And, and what's important for this, for the Alex Theater and, and some of these other facilities is that, forward-looking, while we do have the historic preservation protections that are afforded to the Alex Theater in particular, having the zoning that protects that as a Civic Facility protects it from some future conversion to a use that is inconsistent with that zoning. And therefore, it adds another layer of protection to that particular facility. We know that government facilities, funds, assets of all forms and natures, starting with redevelopment, but also certainly, and looking at some of the amendments recommended to AB 26 at this current time, are looking to claw back into sales tax and other assets that are typically city-owned. And so therefore, it is incumbent upon cities to think more long-term in terms of the very important facilities that are, make up the civic structure, including entertainment venues and other cultural venues, to afford them a recognition that that is the purpose for those facilities. So that's a deeper meaning to adding this layer of protection vis-a-vis the zoning to protect that on a going-forward basis. I hope that provides a little additional depth to.
I think that's.
The reasoning.
Very helpful.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Van Muyden. Mr. Sheets?
Yeah, I just want to, it's caused me to, you'll indulge me to, to carry my thought further. I had thoughts about what's going on here as opposed to questions. And a little precursor, I, I remember being involved in the, it seems like another lifetime ago, the downtown strategic plan, neighborhood task force, the Cooper Plan, which to me, when I look at all of these areas identified with the different colors, is what the plan was about, a concept regarding the whole area. So what came to mind as I was reading this, and I know, I'm just sharing the thoughts I had, it's not about the planning staff's intent, but what occurred to me is, I don't object to any one of these items on this plan, they all seem to make sense. But what they do for me is, when I look at what our objective was, to link the community together, in the Cooper Plan, we have the community centers that were connected throughout the whole town, and each, each center had a, which I think you're trying to do here, had a, had a forte, had a thing that they did. But the kind of changes, if I put all of the items together, let's say the alcohol issue, being specific in a specific area, whether we should or should not have a billiard hall, and the fact that it's not an issue now, my words, or shouldn't be an issue. I, I don't know that that's true, and I don't know that everybody in the community would agree with that. So I guess where my mind went, and, and I apologize if I'm going a little far off track, but it seems to me that, what occurred in this process for me was there enough changes going on that, that were done with public, the plan was developed with a lot of public outreach, not just in a specific area, but the whole plan. I, I know we can't go back and redo the whole plan, but I think there might be public input relative to some of these uses, that as opposed to us just taking all of this today and, and suggesting that go to the council, maybe we might need to do something more. And if that's a bit far-fetched to everybody, I understand that, but it seems to me that, that I'm not so sure I want to take all of these items and say, okay, like I said, I'm not opposed to any one of them, but I'm not so sure that, at this stage, we'll just say, okay, move it forward. So those are kind of the thoughts I had. I'm not sure what the other commissioners might have or what staff input might, might be, but that's kind of where I was going. It just seems that some of these things need to be discussed and interacted around.
If I may comment a little bit about the proposals, the changes with alcohol permits?
Yes, you may.
When we first developed the arts and entertainment district, we, as we said, we did have outreach, and we felt a little more comfortable relying on, on license instead of a CUP. There, I mean, I want to emphasize that there is a license that the operator has to get in the art and entertainment district that kind of substitutes for the CUP. So it's not that we're dropping regulation altogether. We felt a little more comfortable with, because this were areas that were further away from traditional all-residential areas. And secondly, when we talked to our code enforcement staff, it became clear that the problems that we had with certain problem businesses in regards to alcohol were always related to the operation, and they weren't so much dependent on the location. And we worked a lot with a couple of other cities that had instituted similar programs and modeled ours on some programs that had been in place for a very long time in other cities, where really the focus was on licensing the individuals and doing background checks and holding the individuals responsible, as opposed to, you know, yanking permits from a piece of property where, you know, a landlord might be able to bring in a different operator who can run more responsibly.
Yeah, let me, let me clarify a little bit more, and then, then I can let go. But what, the reason I got to there was, in my mind, in reading through this and just reconnecting to the past, I saw the process as kind of, not just this package, but the things that happened with the art and entertainment district and some of the other changes, kind of like a fragmented process relative to the big picture. And maybe that's the way it works, and maybe I'm off-base, but like Maryland as an example, we've, we've had various iterations around the, the Maryland Street and all of the plans there that were all wonderful and had great ideas and were well thought out, but they didn't, didn't always work. So we go back and make some changes to Maryland, but we expand out a little bit more to maybe draw things together, which is a good idea. I'm not saying, I'm not disputing that. But then we talk about more restrictive, less restrictive. That's probably a good part of the thought process at that point in time for that particular issue. And when I started to go down that path with what we're talking about and the individual items, I just automatically said, well, wait a minute, how does this fit to the big picture? So if I'm off-base and there's a totally, completely different thought process, I'm okay with that and I'm willing to listen, it's just that's where I went. And I'm, I'm starting to, starting to look to me like we are chipping away as opposed to adhering to or evolving from the grand plan. And I, and I couldn't just put, I couldn't take the package and go, how does that fit to the, the goals and objectives of the downtown strategic plan or the downtown specific plan?
If I, if I may make a comment here, as, as, I mean.
Yes.
It's, it's interesting, Commissioner Sheets, it's your institutional memory and knowledge from Cooper Plan, strategic plan, that I think is giving you this insight right now in what we're talking about. And that's, can, that cannot be discounted, in my opinion. And I think that's great. However, every plan, whether it's specific, whether it's town center and so forth, you are going to, at least my experience with them has been that, there is a lot of tweaking that goes on after the fundamental plan is established. And I think this is what this staff is trying to do at this point. But your, your comments are well taken. Sorry, I didn't mean to speak out.
Appreciate it.
Well, you know, I think Ms. Van Muyden said, to me, what the Civic Facility District provided was valid, but I'm going to ask a question here because, I'm sorry, I'm really unenamored of Civic Facility. Could it not be called the Civic District? Why does it have to say Facilities? I mean, it, it really does seem to, you know, there, the Alex Theater still to me could have a, a land use that is different than the adjacent land uses, which I think that we are proposing and I think is a good idea based upon the discussion. But it still could anchor a district because it's, you know, there, and it could still have the Alex District. Those are the questions I have. I think some of the changes that we are making based upon the changes that we're making here are, in, in some ways could be divisive. I think taking Alex out of that Alex Theater District that is a frontage does diminish, you know, Mid-Brand has the Alex in it, even if it has an underlying zone that protects it from, you know, it being sold off so that we can, you know, pay your salaries. And I, I say that flippantly, not in any mean sense, but that's some of what has been happening in cities, is selling off of assets. But I, I still think that taking some of the Cooper Plan, which I didn't even know existed, so, and bringing it forward into this plan, I, I think some of the changes have a real substance and the others are, are superficial, and maybe that's, I and the others are superficial, and maybe that's, I guess, the question I have. If I'm going to be focusing on a superficial change and not seeing the bigger change, I have a very difficult time from making changes based upon a plan view and not on a living view of a street, a street view. That's how we experience it. And we've already, now we're going to have, you know, our spot zoning from Mr. Astorion.
And I did not use that term flippantly, by the way.
No, no, you didn't. But we can do that in our city, you know. I think having a protective zoning like that is valid, but I think disassociating Alex from that district, I have a difficult time with. And I was only convinced by Ms. Van Muyden. I also think, when I see these split frontages, I think of, you know, all of the time that you all bring as elements, and you say, well, we have these problems with these split frontages or these split properties, and now we're changing it back. So I, you know, having the frontage use respond to a use that's in there right now, that we made a change for, almost seems to mean that you can change the zoning and then you get to change everything eventually. To me, that seems zoning, that's not the right way to do zoning. I have a hard time with changing two different zonings here, even if it is a school, even if it is the 24-hour fitness. What if it goes back to something else? What if we tear it down? I have a hard time with being responding to what is there right now, instead of responding to what we want it to be in the future. And I see doing little mid-zoning things like that as not being proactive, they're being responsive instead of responsible. And you can disabuse me of that.
If you're finished with all your comments, I can respond to a couple of them. Let me respond with the second one. Actually, our intent is to try and not, is to be more responsive rather than reactive regarding the changes to the frontage standards. And if I may highlight a couple of instances, this location right here, mid-block, we change on Wilson, this is Wilson and Brandt in Maryland here, mid-block, the frontage standard changes from entertainment to primary, in the middle of a building. What we were proposing is to actually adjust that, and in the proposed map, that little split where those two frontages don't quite meet up, that is actually the alley that exists today. A lot of the changes that we're making are adjustments like that, where the frontage would actually change in a logical place like the alley, or where there's a longstanding property division rather than in the middle of an existing property.
Well, that's good to hear.
For the most part, that's, we're trying to make those kinds of adjustments, so we don't have these kinds of oddities, and they respond to logical places, in most cases, alleys.
So then on the 200 block where you have this split frontage, primary and entertainment, because there is no alley here, there is no logical end or transition where a barrier that changes them, is it because you were hoping sometime in the future we'll have?
The 200 block, if you'd be more specific.
I'm looking at the one between Lexington and California on.
Yes, where we're proposing to make the change from secondary, from primary to secondary mid-block.
Right.
That's because the underlying zoning, that brown space, that's the high-rise building in the 300 block.
Okay.
And that frontage has historically been more professional and personal services.
Wait, are you talking, we're talking about between Lexington and California, not north, south?
Yes, that's the 300 block of North Brand.
Sorry.
Okay.
Lexington, California.
In the east side of the street, mid-block, the Downtown Specific Plan has adopted, changes zoning districts within the DSP. It goes from what's currently called the Alex Theater District to the Gateway Center District.
This was the transition.
Right, and that's where that existing high-rise office building is. So we'd actually, that's a logical place to change frontage standards, because the building typology that exists, and the allowed height restrictions and a number of other things, design standards begin to change.
I have another question here.
Please, Mr. Astorion.
Billiard establishments, how, what is it that we can do, and I have nothing against billiard or snooker or eight ball, I've shot some balls in my young, when I was younger than what I am now, but what is it that you can do to avoid establishments that you call billiard establishments to turn into pool halls only, as opposed to, for example, it being like a sports bar that also has billiard facilities? Because this, this concept of the, and there is one in Pasadena that has been around forever, and there's nothing wrong with it, this concept of the pool hall, just a pool hall where, well, I don't know, it just doesn't sit well with my, with my thinking. I mean, just to have a pool hall that you're going to be able to serve alcohol and nothing else, and what is it that we can do that we can avoid that, so it can be a little bit more open, a little bit more, like an incidental use, for the lack of a better word, you know, as part of a larger, like, sports bar?
I guess we all were really astounded to see it go from a conditional use to a permitted use. Because we've seen several billiard events here, although I know you've said that they were operator incidents, they were operating billiard halls with other amenities.
I'm not familiar, do we have any standalone billiards?
You could now.
You could, you could now, I mean, I think they're generally are associated with.
I believe we do have at least one on South Central, and perhaps one on West Wilson or Broadway. I think actually, we did issue a CUP for alcohol in the billiards establishment, South Cent, on the 900 block of South Central is what comes to mind.
That was a Russian billiard hall or something?
I don't recall. I think it operated just fine, and they came back in for a request for an expansion, and the police department had no problem with them expanding.
And so, and so your reasoning is that if you're going to permitted use as opposed to conditional use permit is because there has never been a problem in the past that causes you to worry about this?
I don't recall saying that we've never had a problem.
My, my understanding.
Problems with every kind of use, sometime or other.
Not real estate offices.
We did discuss this with the police department, just to air out any concerns they may have. Billiards by themselves, they indicated, aren't necessarily the problem, it's when it's billiards with alcohol or billiards with a nightclub or something else associated with it that tends to be the problem. But standalone billiards without any alcohol, without any other use, doesn't tend to be a problem for, for the police department, so.
Where is something like that?
I haven't seen a standalone billiard without alcohol.
In my yard, maybe.
At least in Glendale, I haven't seen one, so.
Alley, I mean.
If I may, if a billiard establishment wanted to serve alcohol, they would still be required to get the CUP for the alcohol permit. If they're within the Arts and Entertainment District, then they go through the operator licensing procedures for the same use. But standalone billiards is, without any of that incidental other stuff, is uses.
I think that that's a use that was probably vetted pretty vocally at some of the public meetings, and that, to me, seems interesting, that we would say, well, okay, we haven't had any problems, we don't have any, so we're going to allow it. And, and if it's here, this will happen in there, I mean, I think that was a use, I'm certain it's a use that if it was brought up at any of the public meetings would be very heavily discussed and debated.
That, that point, I agree with Commissioner Landry.
And I guess to answer the rest of your question, Commissioner Astorion, if you wanted to eliminate pool halls in general, I mean, the only thing I can think of just off the top of my head would be to eliminate billiards, period, in certain zones. So I mean, that's one other solution.
That would be too drastic. No, that's not what my intention or my thought pattern was at all. My, it's, and I, and you cannot, yes, legislate morality or lack of problems or what have you, but there is an element with billiard that is associated, and especially what it is with alcohol and so forth. And if it is a standalone, in fact, this is the part that is very surprising to me, but I guess that tells you, maybe, maybe you're correct. What you're telling me is that the problems with billiard halls are the ones that are as an incidental use to music bar and a sports bar and so forth, which to me is absolutely astonishing, as opposed to a standalone billiard hall. Is that what you just said that the PD has referenced?
Without any, again, without any of the, the other uses that go with it, the alcohol and whatnot, billiards has not tended to be the problem.
Yeah, and I understand, I mean, you know, a nightclub without alcohol would not create the same level of problems that would with, with alcohol as well. And I'm not against it, all I'm saying is that I would much rather see this as an incidental use to a sports bar as opposed to an entire standalone billiard hall. What is it, what is our ordinance say now with billiard establishments?
CUP. I'm sorry, what was the question again?
Our ordinance right now, if somebody wants to open a billiard hall, and sir, let's, let's forget about the alcohol for a moment, somebody wants to open a billiard hall, they have to apply for conditional use permit, correct?
Correct.
And the reason that you want to change it is because it's been operator problems, if any problems, and that we have not had any much problems, not any, but much problems with this kind of establishments, correct?
Correct.
So I'd much rather, in my personal opinion, I'd much rather keep it as CUP, because I think you will have better control on it, on this, on this particular subject.
I would add, not that this should determine your vote, but we, part of the impetus for bringing this up for discussion was a request of the city council.
And the request was?
Look at billiard halls.
Consider making billiard hall permitted uses in locations. I mean, the council did not take any final vote, so you should form your normal function of analyzing and recommending, but that is part of the impetus of why we brought it.
And there was no discussion on that relative to alcohol or not alcohol?
And it could have been one council person saying, let's add this to it, it's not as though they made a vote on it or had a discussion on it.
Exactly.
They would be looking for thoughtful comments in relationship to it.
And Mr. Foy, the higher, the higher authority may trump the decision of this body, and as it should be, but that does not stop this body in voicing what some of our concerns are, and that is a real concern for me.
No, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to try to start your discussion, but you were asking what was the impetus for bringing this forward.
And that was not my question, that was hers.
But I would, I would agree with the first choice, my first choice would be to make it permitted use. And if not, it would still be the CUP for alcohol. So at least that way, there's more of a decision to, to go that way and make it non-permitted, and at least there's a checkpoint with the alcohol usage. Just my thoughts on that. I'm agreeing with Mr. Astorion.
And I'm very clear that this is going to go, is going to go back to the city council for their final decision.
Oh, absolutely, yes.
So I think it's important for them to, you know, be cognizant of our comments, and this is not to say that because of this specific thing, I'm not going to vote for this, that's not what my intentions are, but these are comments because that's the higher authority that eventually is going to make that decision. And if we are voting, if I'm voting for this, these are my concerns, along with the supermarket, by the way. Want to have a 24/7 downtown, live, work, play, you're going to be able to provide, you have to expose yourself to a varied array of uses within proximity, a quarter-mile heart of downtown. I'd like to see, you know, right now, what we're saying is Ruff's and Bond's cannot open in our secondary, in our primary streets or in that area, basically. I think that's, I think time will tell if we're right or wrong.
We have not closed the public here, and so we're carrying on this, I think, pretty healthy dialogue. Do we want to continue the dialogue, shall we? Have we had staff's responses then?
If I may, just one other comment, something you said, Chair Landry, again, regarding the terminology or the names of these districts, going from Alex Theater to Mid-Brand, Civic Center to Civic Facilities, I have to confess, I share your heartburn over that, that I prefer Civic Center is more tangible, more place-oriented than Civic Facilities. I don't think it would change the substance of what we've discussed if we were to have a different terminology, and we'd probably have to amend half as many pages, because we're just changing names.
And if I may, one more question, what's the significance of changing the name? Why can't you do what you need to do and leave the name of Alex Theater in there, or in conjunction with, with Civic Center or Civic?
In terms of the Mid-Brand or Alex Theater District, whatever name it takes, we could certainly leave it as the Alex Theater District, even though the Alex Theater property itself may actually be in a Civic Center District or Civic Facilities District. There just seemed to be a little bit of a disconnect that, the thing for which the district was named after was in fact not in that particular Landry's district. But we could also call it the Mid-Brand Alex Theater District or Alex Theater, we could carry both names, or leave it as it is, that's, because I think, but Mid-Brand is also commonly referred to as Mid-Brand by many people, and not so commonly referred to as the Alex Theater District. It's also recognizing what many people refer to that street as, or that portion of 200 and 300 block of North Brand Boulevard.
Thank you very much for sharing my heartburn.
I think names, I think the names and terminology does matter.
I appreciate that, I thought you did. I was like a little, just looking at things thinking, what happened? Any further questions for staff? Well, we will deliberate among ourselves. Maybe we won't. Ms. Van Muyden?
Yes, Commissioner Chair Landry and members of the commission, I just wanted to add a bit of procedural information for purposes of recommending the amendment to the specific plan to the city council, an affirmative vote of a majority of the membership is required.
Okay.
That would be three votes in order to move it forward with the recommendation.
But we would still need three.
Yes, you do, it's not a majority of the quorum, it's a majority of the membership under the government code.
All right.
So I just wanted to inform you of that as you deliberate.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right.
Okay.
Mr. Sheets?
I will start. Thank you for allowing me to ramble on my, my ideas and thoughts regarding to this, this process moving forward. My, my comments, for clarification, were more conceptual than process, I think the process went well, I think the staff, as usual, did a, did a good job, and the thinking is, is there. But my holdup is about the concept, the overall concept, and that's kind of where I'm hung up. So I guess, I'm, I'm open to be convinced that this can go forward with that thinking in mind, but I personally believe that, at the risk of being banished from the commission here by the staff, I, I don't want to belittle or degrade the work that's been done, I just, I just get a feeling over time, as we go forward and make these so-called tweaks, as Commissioner Astorion mentioned, somewhere in there, I don't know where that stops, and I'm, I was essentially losing my connection to the overall objective. So, you know, right now, I'll, I'll hold my vote, I don't know that I want to be the dissenting vote to make this not go forward, but if, I'd like to hear other thoughts relative to where we're going from the other commissioners, make sure I'm not off in some faraway land relative. relative to my objections.
Thank you, Commissioner Sheets.
That's all for now.
Commissioner Astorin?
Again, I think, you know, with our, at least on my part, the comments that I made about those two uses, I can, I, I understand, I mean, in fact, Commissioner Sheets, this discussion at the downtown specific plan went at the inception of it, when it was in its infancy, there was a lot of talk that this is not going to be the be-all, plan to all, so to say. There is going to be modifications as we would proceed in years to come and so forth, and who knows, four years from now, we may have other modifications and so forth. I mean, we saw one that was a major modification on the Americana Town Center.
Oh, yeah.
You and I were the only commissioners here sitting, and that was, that was, you know, that, that was quite a change, but it's understandable, like anything else. You have the foundations, you have the fundamentals, and I agree with you 100 percent. You see, we are at a disadvantage because of your institutional memory and knowledge about the Cooper Plan, the strategic plan, and I get that perfectly, and I think you're well within, well within your rights to raise those questions. But I think like anything else, if there is going to be progress, some of these tweaks would be good, some won't be good, and what have you. The ones that I thought would be good, I didn't talk much about it, the ones that I caught that wouldn't be good, I mentioned them. But I think we should expect, as we go forward, to have these changes, modifications, not changes, modifications, and I agree with you. I mean, you need to consolidate, you need to, you need to balance it against what the original intent is. I agree with you 100 percent, that's not an easy thing to do.
Those are your comments?
Those are my comments.
Well, I, I have a few comments, I think most of them I've already stated. I, I think the naming is a richness to the districts. I think it had some thoughtfulness put in it before, and I sort of am saddened as I, I think I made pretty clear that Midbrand, the Alex Theater was taken out of it and that, you know, it's called Civic Facilities, and, you know, I would, I would propose not changing the names, personally. That would be my first suggestion. I think that the districts, some of the elements that we are doing to enrich and to respond are necessary, we're tailoring this to work. Some of those elements, I, I think, maybe deserve more than three great minds to comment on, and that's the, and that is what I think the billiards is. I think billiards is a pretty volatile issue, I, I have concerns about it not being a CUP. I, I have hesitancy about supporting that. I would feel more comfortable it still being a CUP process instead of a permitted process. And lastly, I, I think that these changes that we are proposing to protect in perpetuity, some of the investments that we as the city are doing are, are very good, and I'm glad that we're putting them forward, and I am in support of those. I, so I would look at most of this, and, and I agree with Commissioner Astorin, I, I think that the most vibrant downtowns I've been in have had, you know, you know, a variety of vibrant opportunities. I think of Chicago and places where I can go and pick up groceries, or even in downtown Philadelphia where there's, hallelujah, Trader Joe's. But knowing that the definition of supermarket is what was kind of the stumbling block for us, so, but it did go from being, and if I, if I wanted to just bring that up, it's the only place where it would not be permitted at all would be in the arts district, am I correct?
And only on Maryland?
And only on...
Yeah, generally speaking, yes.
And then a smaller boutique sort of food purveyor could be there.
Correct.
So that's certainly something that I feel okay with, although those are usually more expensive purveyors in an area. I have, I'm not going to withhold my vote for it, but I do think those are some of the concerns I have, I really think the names need to retain the original richness, that's my recommendation. I think the land use changes, generally, you all have provided really good sound evidence for me. I think changing the billiards to permitted use, I have real hesitancy with, and that those are the items that I think have my comments. We can entertain further discussion.
Yeah, with, with land use issues, I can tell you, for example, the standard Heyman district that we have, and for us to forbid a supermarket to be on that, specifically speaking about the Circuit City side, I mean, I can tell you that, well, you, most of you know my background is commercial rural state and I do analysis all day long, where and how and why, and these are the areas that a supermarket will be, will prosper, will, will, will do quite well, not on Bryant Boulevard. And for us to summarily do away with it, I think is wrong. So that's a comment that needs to be with your report to the city council. And besides, who says Trader Joe's is not entertaining?
Certainly was in Philadelphia.
It's fun.
Yeah. Well, I can entertain a motion, and I think that the motion can include our comments and recommendations and, or...
Attachment one.
Is the motion to approve attached to our packets?
Yes.
Attachment one.
That's actually the ordinance, I think from the staff report, the recommendation on the front page is probably best summarizes.
Oh, all right, okay, you have a city council.
Yeah, the attachment to is the city council.
Right, okay, so...
So is that the one that, oh, here it is.
Those are the draft ordinances.
No, attachment one is the city council.
Right. On the front page of your staff report, the recommendation's probably the best place to summarize.
Okay.
If I may, before a motion is entertained, just if you want to say summaries with comments, that I'm hearing really two, three major comments. First is, it seems this majority of the quorum prefers the original naming of the districts rather than proposed renaming. I'm hearing a strong preference from at least one of the commissioners regarding supermarkets should simply be permitted use, I see another nodding of heads.
Yes.
And I heard that all three of the commissioners were uncomfortable with the proposed change regarding billiards from a CUP to simply being permitted. So those are the three major comments, if we've missed anything, like, it seems significant that you'd like to communicate to the council last night.
I think that summarizes it well.
Okay.
Any other additions?
Done, do.
Did we leave anything out, Mr. Foy? Thank you, sir.
All right, so, recommendation, the Community Development Commission requests that the Planning Commission provide a recommendation to council to adopt proposed amendments to the downtown specific plan zones text changes in order to apply certain arts and entertainment district provisions to the Broadway Center and Midbrand districts, adjust ground floor use frontage, street restrictions along certain streets, revise the Civic Center and Alex Theater districts to create a new Civic Facility District, amend uses within this district, and rezone city-owned properties, the Civic Facilities rename the Alex Theater District to Midbrand and related miscellaneous text amendments. So that's the recommendation I move with the, the items that the commission suggested.
With considerations.
For considerations, yes.
Second?
May I have your call?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
We now have passed a recommendation to the city council on the changes to the downtown specific plan and code amendments. So we will continue with our agenda, which I'm looking for here, excuse me while I find it. We do have an agenda item that follows this, it is item 7B, Amendment to Approved Statutory Development Agreement. The location is 124 West Colorado Street and 2003 West Elk Avenue. It's my understanding that this has been continued?
Actually been withdrawn.
Withdrawn.
It has been withdrawn?
Yes.
All right, so that item has been withdrawn from our agenda, do you know if it's going to come back?
I don't believe it's coming back.
Okay, all right. All right, so our next agenda item is item number eight, Community Development Department Updates.
It just is an update to the Planning Commission, on July 18th, you will see three different appeal items, one of them is one case that actually is two different items, at 806 East Colorado and then at 831 to 33 Honolulu Avenue. And there was also an appeal just filed from, from residents from your decision on remquest. I had that at the previous meeting, that's not been scheduled yet for city council, they just filed the appeal.
All right, thank you. And also, I, just a reminder that we have our event where the city is being honored on the 28th?
Yes, there's the American Planning Association Los Angeles chapter is having their awards dinner on the 28th at Kirk Douglas Theater.
Right, okay, thank you. Any comments from commissioners?
I just had one, the, the item presented by the speaker, Mr. Spiritu, just confirming that I think it sounds like an interesting item, I don't know what his comments, you know, how valid they are, but I guess that would be important information for us, especially relative to the parking spaces. I thought that was very interesting and I'm not aware of any of those changes, so I'm assuming that the changes will be announced to us, but I just wanted to mention that from the commission. Did we hear something on that?
Any other comments from commissioners? I would like to then ask for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Thank you, and seconds?
Second.
We are adjourned.